Okay, and now we are ready to return and the sound is back, so that's good. So, um, we're now going to switch gears to the Platteville School Board. And, uh, there are three seats with three-year terms that will go to the top three vote-getters on April 4th. And the candidates, there are two incumbents and, uh, three challengers. So, since the order is different out here, I hope I get this right, but, uh, from the far left, um, the candidates are Josh Grabot, who is a Platteville Police Sergeant. He has been on the school board for eight years. Gail Schwickrath is, uh, the worker, he work, she works at, uh, Spectrum Brands in Middleton. She's making her first try for elective office. Kurt Timlin owns The Barn and other businesses in Platteville. And he has previously run for the school board, but not won. Uh, Matt Zalinski is the Assistant Director of Residence Life at UW-Platteville. He is making his second run for the school board. And Arlene Sis is the Belmont School Librarian. She's running for her second term in this part of the, uh, of her school board stage. She was previously on the school board for eighteen years, so, um, and again, it is the top three vote-getters, uh, who will, um, be elected to the three-year terms. So, again, we'll start by introducing the five candidates, which we've done, and ask them what they feel the most important issue of this campaign is. And we'll conclude, once again, by asking each candidate why we voters should vote for that candidate. And in between, we'll cover issues that have come up, uh, in the school district. So, I will, uh, start by asking each of the candidates to introduce themselves and, uh, answer the question of why they're running, and we will start with Josh.
Sure. Josh Grabot. Um, I have three kids in the district. I have a son who's in sixth grade. I have a daughter who's in third grade, and I have another son who's in first grade. Um, like, uh, Mr. Press Garden said, I have worked for the Platteville Police Department for the last eighteen years, and been a member of the, uh, School District Board, uh, in the role of Vice President for eight years. So, why did I run? Initially, when I ran, I was encouraged, uh, by my connective, who's on the audience. Thank you, Marty. Uh, there was an opening on the board, and she said, "Hey, I think you should run." And I thought, "Yeah, why not?" I've always had a political itch, and given what I do for a living, it's not like I can get into politics readily. So, I thought, "Yeah, I'll give it a shot." And I got on, and, boy, that was, uh, it was a lot more work than I anticipated. Twenty, twenty-five hours a month, meetings, but I tell you what, it's been exciting. So, that's why I continue to run, is that we have a high-quality district. I would argue one of the best in the state. And being a part of that, where we can help shape the way the district is operated, um, and run, um, has been, uh, something that's been really cool to be a part of. We have a really good team right now on the board, and to be able to work collaboratively with them, to come up with the different initiatives that we have, uh, and forward-thinking-ness with the idea always of what's most important for the kids. As long as we keep that in mind, what's most important for our students, then I think we can continue to have the high-quality district that we have here in Platteville. And, uh, that's why I, um, not really ran initially, but, uh, continue to run.
Okay, Gail.
Um, are we answering why we're running, or what the most important issue is?
Uh, why we're, why you're running?
Um, my name's Gail Schwickrath. Uh, like you said, I'm a, I'm a twelve, I'm sorry, twelve-year resident of Platteville. Um, first, I just want to say thanks to, um, the Platteville Journal, to the city, and of course, the Main Street Program for hosting this. Um, why I'm running for school board, uh, that's a, that's a really great question. I think that I feel a, a drive to see more community involvement and community, um, participation and interaction between the school board and our parents. Um, I want to be a part of, um, as Josh said, a really, um, high-quality school district. I love Platteville schools. Uh, we live in Platteville despite working out of Platteville. I work in Middleton, and my husband works in, in Doddville, because specifically, I want to keep my fourteen-year-old in Platteville schools. So, uh, while our work is pulling us, you know, maybe to the east, we're staying here because we love it. Um, so I want to increase, um, or do my part through, you know, networking and being involved in the community, and bringing parents more aware of the issues that the school board are facing, um, more educated about what it means for, uh, the district, um, and how they can be a little bit more involved in the decisions that are made through, um, feedback, through, um, sharing their concerns a little bit more readily. Uh, when I first looked at, uh, running for office, I realized that I didn't know any of my school programs. And I think part of that might have been, um, on my, on my side, because I didn't seek that information out. But I think that there's also a problem, because it wasn't necessarily something that has been, um, broadly, um, shared or broadly, um, promoted across the, the community. So, I'd like to see essentially more interaction between parents and our school board to help keep the quality of, uh, Platteville schools high.
Okay, Kurt.
My name's Kurt Timlin. I have two kids involved in our district. I have a daughter who's a junior in high school, and a son who's in eighth grade. And I guess I've always done community service stuff, and I feel like it's important as a parent to be involved in things and be involved in the decision-making processes that go on. And I feel like, you know, if we don't get involved, and if we don't volunteer our time, who does it? And I've been going to school board meetings for a couple of years now, and when I've walked into the school board meetings, I've always felt welcome. I feel like we don't have enough people that do attend the meetings and find out what's going on. But when I do attend the meetings, I have a lot of people that ask me, "Hey, what about this?" Or, "What'd they discuss?" Or, "Why did they make this decision?" And, you know, the door is always open. I've been to a lot of committee meetings, and there's a lot of things that happen at the committee meetings that you don't, you see more there, obviously, than you would in the actual open meeting, but committee meetings are open too. So, feel free, as the public, to walk in the door and see for yourself what goes on, and then maybe other people will want to get involved also. And that's kind of why I wanted to vote.
Okay, Matt.
Um, for me, um, wanting to run, uh, this time, I ran, um, in two thousand fifteen, and at that time, as you remember, we had a referendum, and, um, I was a huge proponent of the referendum at the time. And, um, took a year off, didn't run last year, and wanted to run again this year. Um, again, I work with the university, uh, as the Assistant Director of Residence Life, and, and work a lot with budgets, and do a lot of that on a day-to-day basis. For this time around, really with our current political climate, I think, at the state and federal level, for me, it really, it really propelled me to get more involved, um, to be a part of that and be a part of that voice. I have, I'm a parent of two young boys. I have an eight-year-old and a three-year-old, um, so one that's in second grade currently, and one that will be in the school district next year. And so, I wanted to get into this opportunity to be an advocate, because we know, as been, as been said before, the public education system here in, in town is an amazing institution that we have, our, from our superintendent to our school board, um, all the way to our, our involved parents. And so, for me, it all comes back to that advocacy and support, uh, for the district, and supporting our public schools and what public schools stand for, um, supporting and advocating for local control, um, at the state level, um, with our legislators and in Madison. And also, I'm bringing some of my expertise and hoping to help with, uh, with the board and try to navigate some of the, uh, some of the, you know, the budget issues that the district faces, and look at new ways to maybe market our district, and, and make those ca, um, those commitments to, for the betterment of the educational experience for our students. And most importantly, uh, for me, uh, being married to a teacher, um, really taking a look at stu, at teacher morale in our district. I think, um, wanting to look at that and make sure that they feel appreciated. Uh, we, we heard a lot in the city council session about doing less with more, and I think our teachers, uh, more than anyone in our community, have been asked to do that over the, over probably the last ten years, um, if not more, in the state of Wisconsin. And we need to find ways to continue to make sure that they feel supported. I think they do feel supported, but after a while, we know we can't be naive to the fact that they continue to, um, that their, that their profession is, is continuing to be, um, you know, at risk, um, and insulted. So, that's why.
Okay, Arlene.
Yes, thank you. Why, I don't have children. I love children, and I love working with them. I love being with them. Uh, I'm at, uh, Belmont, which is very small school. And one of the things that I have found is that by working with the children, it really lets me know as to what I should be thinking about and bringing to the school where I live, because I think children are very open, uh, when they find somebody who will listen to what they do. And I have children who do that. And, um, the reason I, I'm running again is because I care about the children. I care about what is now happening to our children, the money that we are not getting for our children, um, as we are trying to do, have our children to be the best of ev, of everything and everybody. And it's really important for, for me to be all that I can do to make things work for them, so that they can be successful, to have the things that I had when I went to school, a thousand years ago, I think it was, but I was, but things were, uh, things were so much better, and now it's so difficult for our children. And I want to be a part so that we can have the things for them that we have. Um, I don't go on and on about talking, but I do care tremendously for our children, and what can I do? And I bring things, I think, to the, to our school district because of that.
Okay. Second question is, what do you believe is the most important issue in this campaign? And whatever that, uh, issue is, what is your position on it? And we will start with Gail.
Um, the most, first of all, I just want to say that I'm really excited to be a part of this race. As I listen to everybody else's comments, I realize that no matter what happens in the election, these three seats are really filled by amazing people. Um, everybody here cares about Platteville and has such an investment, so I'm really excited to be just campaigning with you guys. Um, the most important issue for me in the campaign, I think, um, facing our schools right now, is our, um, decreasing enrollment, and as a result of that, the decreasing budget. Um, I was lucky enough to attend a board meeting. Connie Valenza presented the, um, upcoming budget, um, and explaining where the deficit is coming from, which is decreasing enrollment, um, along with, um, a lower number of, um, individuals retiring. So, with fewer students at our schools, we're getting less funding. Um, if I'm remembering the numbers right, uh, the governor's proposal would provide another two hundred dollars per year for students, and I'm just kind of wondering in my mind, what does two hundred dollars for a student in a year do, really? Um, so I think that our decreasing, decreasing enrollment and our, um, as a result, decreasing, um, funding is the, the biggest issue that's facing, um, our school, uh, today. My position is, uh, falling back on my drive to get the community involved, is, um, I think that, like, a lot of the, the council reps and candidates talked about, was, um, working together with the city in terms of making Platteville an attractive place for people to live. Um, I think that we have a deficit in affordable housing for, um, a certain, certain income level, and as a result, those people are seeking housing elsewhere. Um, I'm not too sure of the solution for that, obviously. I think that is a dialogue that needs to happen between both the common council and the students, uh, I'm sorry, and the school board, um, and the other groups that were mentioned earlier from the, the council reps, to work together in a more concerted effort and a more collaborative way to find ways to make Platteville a place for people to live. Um, I don't know if it's a matter of higher-paying jobs, I know that was mentioned. I feel like we have, um, a, a very solid, um, job market here. We have the university. I feel like that is a very, um, quality, quality work. So, we have a situation where I think a lot of people work in Platteville but don't stay here. And I would love to delve into, into that reason and find out why. Um, why do people want to work here, stay at the university, but they need to live in Madison? Um, if we could find those people who are, are not supporting the city by living here and though they work here, that could go a long way in terms of improving our, um, both our residency as well as our enrollment in our schools.
Okay, Kurt.
I believe probably the single largest thing is obviously the budget. Um, and obviously, it's a hot topic this time of the year. Um, I was also at that school board meeting when Connie presented their numbers, and it's a difficult task at any time when you're trying to work with a budget. It's also difficult when you hear from people in the community, and they ask, "What do these numbers mean?" And you try to explain it to them when they weren't at the presentation, but you do the best you possibly can to present it the way that it was presented to you. And when you're talking numbers like four hundred thousand dollar shortfall, and as Matt said before, you want to take care of one of your most important assets in there, in the teachers, it's, it gets difficult. And, you know, you talk about a one percent increase for teachers, but then yet a ten percent increase in health insurance costs. It is difficult to recognize those people that are doing a good job, that are taking care of our students. And that becomes a delicate balance, and it's something that, you know, we all need to share, and I think, um, I think we need to understand that a hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but when you talk about it's a one percent increase or a quarter per hour for the hourlies, it's not really a lot of money, not when you talk about what kind of increases they're facing, what healthcare costs and things like that.
Okay, Matt.
Um, it's gonna sound like a broken record here, but obviously, budget, um, enrollment going down, um, definitely is one of the major issues affecting our district currently. Um, and really, for me, it comes back to a lot about communication, and communication with stakeholders in the community. We, again, we heard, and Gail talked about, you know, stakeholders in the community and working with, um, working with our community to, you know, get those high-paying jobs and get people to live here in town. Uh, for me, I think it sometimes goes into a little bit more of the marketing, and sometimes, you know, school districts aren't used to marketing themselves like a business, and I'm, I'm the last person to want to compare a school district to a business, and wouldn't do that. Um, but sometimes we have to think along the lines of marketing and touting, "What are the great things that we do?" So, we're not losing students to open enrollment, and that we are not, um, and so that our community members know about what's great, um, in, in our community and, and our school districts. Um, you know, working with local real estate agents, do they, and, and, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, do they have the information about our schools? So, when they're talking to visitors in our community, when they're coming to visit us, do they have those tools and that information to share with them to help recruit people to live here in town? I think that's really important. We need to make sure that the people in our community know what's great about our schools, because we know the awards that we've won, we know all of the great things about our teachers, because we have a passion for it, and we care about it, and our kids are in the district. But somebody visiting Platteville looking at us, they need to know those types of things, for sure. And so, it really comes back to, again, communication along those lines. And for me, um, it, it also goes to, I, I was doing some research about homeschooling in our district a little bit, because I know we have a significant amount of families in our district that, that homeschool. And I don't, um, and I have to ask, ask Connie what the current year is, but I know, uh, fifteen, sixteen, the DPI talked about, um, Platteville had eighty-six students that were homeschooled, which I thought was, that seemed like quite a bit for the amount of students we had in our district. And it comes up to five point, five and a half percent of, of school-aged children that are homeschooled in our, in our town. Um, and so, I kind of compared that to, if you look at La Crosse, three or four times larger district, that, um, and they only homeschool about a hundred and eleven. So, those two numbers just really stuck out to me. I thought that was really, uh, really impactful for something to think about. So, with that, I think communication is, I know some of those families that do homeschool, and I know some of those families have left the school district to homeschool. So, for me, it's, I want to sit down with those families and talk about, "What happened? Why are you, why did you move there? Why are you where, are where you're at?" And we know there are different variables and different layers to that, whether it be religious preferences or whatever, and so those are some of the families that, that maybe aren't going to be attracted back. But I think we need to have those conversations to figure out, "Here are some of the students we're losing out of our district that are still here in our district. What can we do?" Or at least get that assessment and that feedback from those families to figure out, "What are the ways that we can improve in the district, whether that's behavioral or safety, or whatever the issues are, so that students, that families feel good about having their students in public schools, which we know our schools are great."
Okay, Arlene.
Um, I, I look at things a little differently. Uh, I don't disagree with it, with anybody who said, but one of the things that I think that, um, is, 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 uh, something that is, uh, not keeping our children or not having children here, and families, because people cannot find houses that they can buy, the houses, uh, that, or that they can afford. And that is keeping people from not coming here in Platteville, but going to the schools around here. Um, Belmont is having, is great, gain students, not losing them, and it's because people can go there and, and get houses that are not too expensive. That, that, that is a huge, huge part, I believe, and we need to be thinking about that. I'm also concerned, and we're, because we don't have, um, places for people to buy their houses or whatever, many of our, uh, teachers are no longer, are not in our town. They're in other places, because they can't find places to stay here, to be here, to afford here. And so, I think that's one of the things that, unfortunately, I look at that, is that, uh, because we're not having, um, and as we learn, is that this, there's not as many students who are at, at our school, which does hurt us in many ways. And one of them is that we may have not, we may not use some of our teachers this coming year, because we don't have enough children to take care of them. I mean, we have, we have so many children that, but, uh, but not enough, but not enough to keep everybody with their jobs right now. And so, I think that is something that we need, need to be thinking about. How can we get more families in here? And, and they don't, and they want to have houses, not just parts of houses or that type of thing. So, those are some things that I look for, that I'm working toward.
Josh.
As I said before, because I think it is the most obvious answer, it is the declining enrollment. Everything starts with enrollment. If we lose students, we lose state-funded, and where do we get our money from? We can't have bake sales to fund our schools. It's just not the way that the funding works. We lose one student, on average, that's about ten thousand dollars in state funding that we lose. So, we lose ten students out of a district of fifteen hundred. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a hundred thousand dollars. That's a teacher. And I heard in the last forum, the, the phrase many times, "Do more with less." We have been doing more with less for years in the district. We've been very fiscally responsible with the dollars that we have, and that's something that every decision that we make, we think of, "How can we be fiscally responsible with our money?" That being balanced with the thought and the prevalent, um, idea that's out there now that our public sector employees are the, the reason why we are in the economic issues that we're in right now. I can tell you as a public sector employee that we're demonized often, because we take government money, and we're always looking for more money. Our teachers have gone many times without additional dollars. We would love to be able to give them more money, but simply, it all goes back to the idea of, "If we don't have the students, we can't bring in the money." We are already being fiscally responsible with your money. So, what's the answer to that? Affordable family housing would be great. What can I control? And one of the questions was, what's my position on it? What can we control as a board member? As a board member, we can control, uh, having good schools, and I would argue that we are doing that. Look at, if you're going to look at anecdotal evidence, our state report card, where we are exceeding state standards, greatly exceeding state standards. We're one of the top districts, not only in our area, but in the state. So, we're doing what we can do, um, but we could use some help from some other entities, uh, in terms of helping us with the, the declining enrollment problem.
We'll get to that momentarily.
I think so.
But, um, but kind of to be a little bit more general before that, uh, the next question is, in general, what is your opinion of the state of the school district, and what do you feel needs to be improved about the school district? And we'll start with Kurt. What is your opinion of the state of the school district? How do you feel about the school district, and what, in your opinion, needs to be improved? And we'll start with Kurt.
Well, in my belief, the state of the school district is fairly decent right now, considering the economic times that we're under. I think that Josh hit the nail on the head. I think that for a long time, they've been doing as much as possible with as little as possible. I think there has been responsible spending that's gone on over the course of time. We've had great teachers in the past. I'm a product of some of the great teachers we had in the past, and I believe we still have some great teachers. And I'd like to see us do whatever we can, obviously, to attain and maintain those great teachers. And it's going to be tough, obviously, in the times that we're in, but sometimes, we need to do some of the other things that are the intangibles, such as recognizing the teachers and things like that. And we can all, as a community, always do a better job of that. As we've heard up here from a couple of different people, the public people, the ones who do take money from our government, sometimes are attacked, and unrightfully so. And I believe that, you know what, every time you see some of those people that do serve us in any way, shape, or form, it's not a bad idea to thank them sometimes for what they do. Because sometimes these jobs are felt like they are thankless and stuff like that, and they're not thankless jobs, and we all benefit because of the jobs that they do.
Okay, Matt.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think the state of our school district is, um, A-plus if we're going on the educational scale. Um, I really think, like, you know, as been said before, our teachers, um, are phenomenal. And we have teachers in our district that, um, I think, um, are great at their jobs, but also are untapped resources in terms of the knowledge that they have, um, in the community and social issues, um, that go far beyond the classroom. And I think that's, maybe ties into maybe one of the things we can improve upon, is just improving communication, uh, and including our teachers, and improving communications from, all the way from maybe the superintendent, all the way down to taxpayers that don't have, that don't have children in the district, and, and finding ways for us, um, or for the school board to continue to have those conversations with people in the community. Um, I think Gail talked a little bit about, you know, not knowing who the school board members were until we, until you take the initiative to really find out who they are, and I'm in that same boat. Um, you know, even being in the district and my wife being a teacher, there were, you know, the first few years, I didn't know who the, who the board was, other than a few people I actually knew that were on it. And so, you have to take that into consideration. But I think we have a solid school district. Um, we talked about the do less with more. Um, I don't know how much more of that we can do without really making some draconian-type cuts and, and really, you know, hurting the livelihoods of people, but that's something that, um, you know, is something that just kind of goes with, with forces outside of our control right now. Um, and so, I, I think we're good in, you know, communication and, and talking with the stakeholders and parents in the district, that doesn't cost us anything. I mean, it really doesn't. I mean, so if we're talking about budget, that's something free we can do. Talk with the people in the community, what are their ideas? And I know with our current school board and whatever the makeup is going forward, I know that all of them would be, would be eager to sit down and talk with people and have those conversations, uh, about the, the future of the school district and where we're headed and what we can do. Um, but again, that, that's just one area that I would, that I would like to see improved, um, even though I know it's happening now very well.
Okay, Arlene.
One of, uh, the things that have, we've been doing, um, this year, is that we've been asking, uh, school, the, the different parts of the school districts to come and let us know, uh, and tell people, what are some of the things that they're doing with their education with, with the kids? What are they doing with them? And it is amazing how hard all of these people are working for our students to be the best of the best. It is unbelievable. Um, every one, every time they come in, um, they are so excited that they can say and show and talk about what they're doing. I think, I think it's very nice that, that, uh, they, that they can come and, and talk to us about what they're doing with their children, because many times, we never see them. We might see them once in a while, but, but they've come in, and I think these are some of the things that we need to continue, is to make sure that we're connecting with our students and, and making sure that the parents and everybody else, and this, and the city itself, to, to realize what a fantastic, the school district we have, because it is fantastic. Others are jealous of what we're doing, and we've got some good people who are really making big differences in, um, and with our new building, uh, uh, what we did this past year, um, has really made a difference too. I think people are just so excited. They want to do things for the children to be successful, and I think that's all I can say.
Okay, Josh.
I love this question, because it is to fulfill a political need that I've always wanted to do. State of the Union, the State of the Union of the Platteville Schools is strong. Mr. Press Garden for that question. What do I mean?
Thank you for your answer, Mr. President.
The, uh, the, the school district is strong. We have a strong district. And why do we have a strong district? It's the same. We don't earn a blue ribbon, um, and aren't recognized for our middle school with having a weak staff. It starts with our staff across all of our schools. They do a phenomenal job educating our children, uh, not just our staff, but our support staff, our administrators, uh, giving them the tools that they need, um, to succeed, to help our students. to have our students succeed for whatever it is they decide to do after high school. Because ultimately, that's what we're trying to do. We've got them 4K through 12. And we try to give them all the tools that they can while they're with us in the district. And after that, whatever they decide to do, we wanna make sure that they have everything that they can have to go forward. What do we need to improve on? We don't tell people that we do such a good job. We do a poor job of it. We don't sell our district very well at all. It's hard to pat yourself on the back. It's not a natural thing to do, to be rightedocious and stand up there and say, "Look at how great our schools are. We can do it up here on this forum." And that's what we should be doing. Because we do have great schools, but we don't do a good enough job of it. And where does that start? It starts with the board. I'll argue, we're doing a poor job already of, and people have said it, others have mentioned it. We don't do a good enough job um touting our successes, letting community members know and other communities know how great we are. We know it. We just do, need to do a better job of telling people uh how great Platteville Schools are. That could help with the, uh, the enrollment problem. You know, letting them know, hey, we are a destination school. We are a great community, and it starts with your schools. And uh, we need, we need to do a better job. We are, as a dis, as a board, not to completely throw us under the bus. We, we have started a community outreach committee. And we started um this year going out to the community and trying to tout more of what it is that we do as a district and meet with community members. It's in the infancy stages. We're starting to do it. Um, but we recognize that that is something that we need to do, and we're working on it.
Okay, Gail.
Um, I'm gonna reiterate what, uh, a few things that have already been said. I love the, uh, the remarks about marketing and promotion. I would use promotion because my background is communication and PR. I don't really like the idea of relating schools to businesses. It's about public service and should be treated as that, not a free market. But um promoting what the um school system um is and the um destination school, I wrote that down because I'm gonna keep that in the back of my brain going forward. That would be a great thing to say to other people about Platteville Schools. Um, so I'm in full agreement that we have an amazing district. It's very strong. Um, marketing would be really, really great to help promote that outside of the community. Um, the communication piece between, um, as Matt said, between the, um, all levels of the school district, from superintendent to the educators, to the administrators, all the way down to the parents, and even those individuals in our city who don't have kids. They're still paying taxes because it's important to educate everybody. Um, specifically, um, I would love to see, obviously, um, I think as Kurt said, our educators are already doing so much with so little. And so thanking them more is essential. And doing everything that we can to retain the system that has been in place, the educators, the administrators that have made this school district and maintained it at such a high level is obviously essential to keep our success going. Um, more specifically about what I would fix personally is, as I was looking around um the school districts, uh, while I was planning my son's future, he's fourteen, he'll be in high school next year, was I was looking at high school rates. So our um district gets a really good um rating. Our scorecard is somewhere in the eighties, eighty-something percent. Um, but the only, um, the lowest performing school right now is in the seventies, and that's our high school. So um if our high school was brought up to wherever our, you know, middle school blue ribbon level is, then imagine how much more we can provoke, promote Platteville Schools in our school district as a destination school or a destination, destination district. It would, you know, completely blow our, our school system underwater. So I would say, look at what has the middle school been doing that's really um put them into that blue ribbon category? And how can those be applied to our high school, bring that up to the same level as our elementary schools and our middle schools? So that all of our schools are at the same level and our scorecard just raises up from where it's been. There's always room for improvement. We're great, we're doing amazing things. So finding even better ways to be more amazing is, is high on my list.
Okay, this question or this issue has come up already repeatedly, so we might as well tackle it now. Um, given the fact that state aid is very heavily tied to enrollment, given the fact that the district has been uh dropping in enrollment in uh certain classes and overall specifically, and that that is kind of the big issue with the budget, what can the school district do to attract more students? And whether that, I mean, I guess what I would like to hear as an answer is what the school district is able to control. The school district probably cannot compel the city to build more houses, can't control the birth rate, um, but in the areas, in the areas that the school district can in fact control, what should the school bis, district be doing to attract more students? We'll start with Matt.
And I, and I would argue that we don't have control, well, we don't have control over birth rates. And not that we have control over um, you know, affordable housing in town, but that doesn't mean we don't need a voice in that. And I, I alluded to that earlier about talking with different constituents and stakeholders in the city and surrounding areas about marketing ourselves and, and making sure that the people, all the way from realtors to the Chamber of Commerce to new businesses, people that are trying to hire new families and get new families into town, um, to make sure that they know what's great about our school district. So they know the statistics of why we're great and why we've gotten the, the grades at the middle school, and even why our, our other schools are great places to be. So I would argue that, you know, we have a voice at the table. We don't have control over it. But I think you can control your own destiny by having a voice at the table. Um, and I think, you know, other ways, we've talked about marketing. Um, you know, it is, it's hard to pat yourself on the back. I think it's um, I, and it's kind of humbling when you run for public office like this and people are always asking you, "Tell me about why you're good for this. Why would you do a good job at this?" Myself, I'm not one to kind of pat myself on the back as much. And so that's hard to do as a district as well. But when you look at the times that we're in and we know how great we are, it's time for us to do that and kind of put that aside and for us to say, this is why we're great, for us to get out to local communities and talk with people. And, you know, we're probably not gonna be doing billboards, but again, there's social media. There's lots of things that we can do. And to be able to talk to our legislators and the people in Madison as well and let them know and let, you know, especially like Travis, people like Travis Tranel, so he knows why we're so great. And I know Connie's done a great job of that, of getting out there and talking with, over Mark Klein and Travis Tranel. Um, but they also need to hear from us as well. They need to hear from people in the community, parents, people on the school board, and not just an email, a face-to-face, a call, show up where they're at and put them on the spot and let them know what's being hurt in our district based on the decis, some of the decisions that are being made.
Okay, Arlene.
Well, I think we could go, what we do over television and radio, we could put, start putting more things out, you know, and having our own things to show what we're doing here and just send it out to everybody. I think we could get, I think we could get a lot of people who would come. Um, particularly if we could uh have a way for, for them to, especially if they have younger children, to bring uh, to bring, almost pick them up and bring them in here rather than the parents. But talk to the parents who are, who are working here in Platteville and talk to them about having their children come to our school. And I know that that does happen already. I know s, school, people who work at our schools are bringing their children to us already. Um, I think it's something that we, I think, uh, perhaps with the, with the um new buildings that will be going on, maybe there will be families that will be coming there and they'll bring their chi, you know, and there'll be uh people who are, have children. And I'm hoping that that will be one of the things that we, uh, we were, we were able to get is people staying here on Main Street and, and bringing their children in so that they could be in our school. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do, but I think that we need to be also we need to understand. Sometimes it's hard to get people from other places to come when they're with their fa, with their where they're living and the people that they know and, and it's hard to sometimes move them away to us. So I don't know. And I, I don't really have an answer that I can do that because I think it's more than just Arlene talking about this. I think it's something that we all have to be sitting at and figuring out some things.
Okay, Josh.
I said before, we can control, we can control and, and providing quality schools and having the direction from the board to continue that is, is the main factor, the main thing that we can do to try to increase enrollment. Um, and again, it's more, it's been said a couple of times, it's more community outreach. Uh, I think an untapped area that we don't hit enough on is maybe um we're involved with our families. Because when people are looking to settle in the community, they're gonna ask the people that are currently going to the district, the families that are in the district, hey, tell me what you think about Platteville. You know, we could do maybe a better job of letting our families know of all the successes that we have. They can see it on an individual level. My child is, is excelling in this, or my child, you know, is needing help in this, so I would request. It's, it's providing those opportunities and, and selling exactly what it is that we can provide as a district to the families that are in the district. Um, because if you don't have a child who's in 4K, you don't know everything that's going on right in the 4K program, but that doesn't mean that we should be telling everybody what's really cool in the 4K program. We had a, we have a math and science night coming up. Do a better way of outreach there and say, you know, as a community, come on, check it out. Family members, come on, check it out. Um, we do a, a decent job of it, but um, you know, it's just not ideal to try to increase enrollment, um, getting those families that we have in the district more involved with district activities. And once they're more involved, then they could be some of our biggest advocates that we have out there.
Okay, Gail.
Um, I think it's been said a few times that it's hard to pat yourself on the back. Um, I'm in a little bit of a disagreement there because I have no problem bragging about Platteville Schools to everybody. Um, every time I talk about moving, because we're relocating in town uh to a bigger house um in the middle of all of this craziness, and every time I talk to friends in Madison about it, they're like, "Oh, are you moving to Madison finally?" Um, and I straight up say, "No way, I'm keeping my son in Platteville Schools. We're staying in Platteville because I wanna make sure that Walter goes to school there." So I have no problem bragging to everybody that I possibly can about um our school district and what our schools do for our kids. I am just one person, though. So to have more people and more outlets advocating for um what our school's gonna offer and that whole marketing idea is definitely key. Um, the more voices like mine that are out there, the more that people learn about our district and want to be a part of it. Um, and I think it was even Matt or Kurt that mentioned earlier that, um, you know, we can't control our funds, that is by enrollment. And so, um, but people time is free. Um, the amount, the ability to go out and talk to people and advocate, um, the ability to talk to other people to learn and research, research is something that we have available to us, regardless of how much money we have or what our enrollment number is. Um, and I know that we can't control the birth rate. I don't think that it is a birth rate in Platteville that dictates our school enrollment. Um, I don't know how many people are born in Platteville, stay in Platteville, and have all of their children in Platteville. I don't think that's what keeps Platteville Schools going necessarily. Um, I don't know of any towns that are just literally, you know, built on only those people who live there just keep, you know, expanding their families. I think that we can't control enrollment in terms of attracting people to Platteville and all the blue ways that we've already talked about. Um, in terms of marketing, um, you know, our, our um blue ribbon schools, um, what we can accomplish, um, using things like the um Chamber, the, the real estate companies, and promote um the awards that we win. All of that um is a huge piece of it. Um, and again, I'm gonna reiterate the community involvement. That's kind of my specialty. One of the things I'm working on right now, actually, is um helping um recruit people to attend our local emergency PTO meeting. And I will, you know, actually request any of you who want to come to that. It's on the thirtieth at six o'clock. Um, it's gonna be held at the middle school in room 118. And you're literally facing a situation where our parent-teacher organization is so void of support and volunteers that they're facing disbandment. If we don't have enough people step up right now in terms, in terms of our parents to work with our teachers on all of the activities, our PTO will be far. So um it's definitely showing, I feel like that's kind of a symptom of the lack of the community engagement and the community involvement between our schools and our, and our parents. So I'm hoping to get as many people there and to kind of revive that a little bit. Um, all it takes is volunteer hours and volunteer time. And I think I have some good friends with children who are in school, um, who I'm gonna bring to that. So um, the other thing that I would, would think about in my mind is investigating uh in terms of enrollment, why people um choose to work here but not live in Platteville? I feel like that's a piece and a puzzle that we could potentially solve. Information is power. And if you're able to approach those individuals who um work here but don't live here and find out why, what is it about Platteville that is um a deterrent? Is it the housing prices? Is it um, you know, the amount of single-family houses that are available versus apartments? Is it cost? Is it um, you know, things to do? Do we not have enough, enough culture for you? Which I would argue, because I've packed my son's summer schedule with things from city to school and everything, so I know that we have those things. Um, is it access to businesses? Is it um access to, um, you know, uh, things like museums? Um, what is it about Platteville that isn't attractive enough to bring you here to live here, even though you are willing to work here? So that I think is something that is, again, it doesn't cost money to do that. All it takes is a little bit of time and initiative to dig into those reasons and talk to people and learn as much as you can.
Okay, Kurt.
I believe that the community showed their confidence in the schools when they rewarded the school district with the referendum, obviously. Now it's time to go out and look at what are our competitive differences? You know, what do we have going for us that are our strengths? One of the things in this area that we have going for us is we're one of the largest districts. And there's probably some things that we offer within our district that other districts that are smaller can't offer. And once again, maybe we need to thump our chest a little bit and say, "This is what we do offer in Platteville that somebody else doesn't offer." Not to pick on a specific district or anything, but we should be proud of that. And whether it be music programs, whether it be sports, whether it be theater, whether it be a science club, whether it be a chess club, I don't know what that key trigger is for somebody, but maybe those are some of the things we need to focus on, letting people know that we have that somebody else might not be able to have because in their size of district, they can't afford to have those opportunities to kids. And maybe those are some of the things that eventually parents and/or kids say, "I wanna be there," because they have that. And that's what I want to pursue.
Okay, um, a related question next, which has also come up uh at this point. And it may seem a little strange to say this when the school district is looking at possibly laying off some teachers due to enrollment issues. But in the post Act 10 world that we're in, um, how does the school, how should the school district uh go about continuing to attract and retain teachers when the school district is obviously in competition with other school districts, uh, both in this area and farther away for those same teachers? And we'll start with Arlene.
Well, um, I find that kind of interesting because uh I think you said it exactly is that we may have to have some teachers not be with us. And um, I, I don't know. It's a, it seems to me that we have people who do go out and get people, really good people who are at our, who come to um our school to see if they can work there. And maybe it's because it's a different person or a different type of thing that we need. But I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. In my, I think these, we have good people now. And whatever we can do, we want to keep them as long as we can. And um, they would certainly be open if we did have to not have them for a while. But I just, I guess I just don't, I don't get that.
Hey, Josh.
So how's the district attack, attract and retain the teachers that we have? Before we begin, yeah, begin my answer, just recognize, post Act 10 is tough being a teacher. They took their entire world and flipped it upside down in terms of what they were able to do with collective bargaining. It was taken away from them. Uh, I'm not gonna debate whether that was good or bad. That's a political issue, and we didn't have to put a D or R after our name when we uh had to sign our pay bridge, so I'll leave it at that. That being said, we have, Dr. Valenza deserves a lot of credit for this.
Yes.
She's done some very unique things that have been copied throughout the state in terms of uh how we, how we uh pay our teachers and how we try to attract and retain them. A couple of examples. Um, we have, we're one of the few districts in the CISA district here that we have post-retirement benefits. We still offer uh some sort of retirement upon, or some benefit upon retirement. A lot of our, our districts in the area have not been able to do that. Dr. Valenza came up with a way of, of making it sustainable within our current economic situation to allow that. Uh, there are certain uh teaching areas that are difficult to attract teachers in. We are able to provide um a little bit of extra money as an incentive that if, in a certain uh area of education or a topic, if they come and teach at the Platteville district, we're able to give them a stipend. That um Dr. Valenza was able to come up with the money through the budget to make it happen. That Dr. Valenza was able to come up with the money through the budget to make it happen. Every year, even though there is no more collective bargaining, Dr. Valenza and board members will go to the teachers and say, what do you need? What ideas do you have? And I can tell you, being a part of the operations committee, that we take that real serious. When the teachers say, hey, let's get creative on our health insurance, let's get creative on our dental. Can we maybe, you can't pay us more, but can we hit more sick days? Can you maybe change the way that we are allocating our sick days? We take that serious. And if it's something that we're able to do, that makes sense for the taxpayers, sense for the district, and sense for the board, then we do it. So Dr. Valenza deserves the credit in this. That she's gone out and come up with very creative ways of addressing, attracting, and then retaining the teachers that we have.
Okay, Gail.
I just want to reiterate thanks to Dr. Valenza for all the work that she's done. It's clear that she has had a strong focus on our educators and making sure that they are compensated in a way that makes them, that recognizes the amount of love that they have for our kids. My mind immediately goes to the threat, what I perceive as a threat of privatization of schools. I think that keeping our schools public is going to be a big part of making sure that we're able to do the kinds of things that Dr. Valenza has done for our teachers, for administrators. If we're talking about finding more creative ways to offer benefits, that's something you can do with that local control of your public school system. It's not something that you can do if you have, you know, a charter or a voucher school, which is essentially a business. It exists for profit, not necessarily for schools. There isn't the same amount of screening for educators. They don't have to have the same certifications. They don't have to have the same training. So keeping our schools public at all costs, I think, is going to be a huge part of maintaining, I forget what the question was.
Attracting.
Retaining teachers, yes. Giving the flexibility of making sure that all of their needs are addressed through a public school system versus a private school system is, is key to retaining long-term support from our teachers.
Okay, Kurt.
I believe a huge part of the support for attracting and retaining is, does come from Dr. Valenza's office. I have had many meetings with her. And in the meetings I've had with her, she likes to think outside of the box a lot of times, as I do, and I respect that. And, you know, instead of saying, well, this is the way we've always done it, or this is the way all schools do it, or this is the way we should do it because everybody else does it that way. She takes that approach of what if? What did we look at? If we look at this, then what happens here? And I respect that. Because that's the same way I typically try to look at things. And I think with outside the box thinking, it opens up some new avenues sometimes. And when you have those new avenues, that's sometimes where you can see those results. And I think, you know, Josh hit the nail on the head with the whole retirement thing. We are unique in that respect. And I think that there's teachers out there that do appreciate that still. And I hope that they continue to appreciate that and have that benefit. So let some of them that are good decide to stay around until retirement. Hopefully we have them that way.
Okay, Matt.
Yeah, I'm going to get on the Dr. Valenza train here and really thank her for everything that she's done. And I mean that sincerely because I think, you know, if you've talked with her or talked to teachers that work with her, I'm, it's a thankless job. I mean, being a school superintendent is, you don't get in it for the pats on the back and the kudos every day, but really what she does, making hard decisions and coming up with those outside of the box solutions, I think, are commended. And I see that firsthand because I'm, you know, my wife is a teacher. So I see some of the things that have happened in the district and have benefited from them myself. Really appreciate that. And I hear from a lot of teachers really brave reviews about Dr. Valenza and what she's done. And I think that's really a testament to what she's done and being able to balance being administrator, but also being able to connect with, with her employees as well. You know, when we look at attracting new teachers, and I think Gail hit the nail on the head too, about voucher schools and looking at charter schools and how that affects the teaching profession in general. If you look at probably the last 10 years, I think the latest statistics in the state of Wisconsin are, in the last 10 years, there's 3,000 less teachers. Now, there's a lot of factors that are attributed to that, whether that be, you know, again, less funding, it could be, you know, just the trends in, you know, college, programming and things like that. But again, it's something we need to focus on. And I think we have a lot that we offer here, again, with some of those creative solutions, whether it be with benefits. But again, it goes back to that communication. And I think a lot of the teachers in our district really feel supported and feel like their voice is heard and still want to have more of a voice. But compared to other districts and other teachers I've talked to in other districts, I think we're in a good spot there. You know, as far as attracting new teachers, I think there's some advocacy and some work that we can do at, you know, at the higher education level and really promoting, getting our teachers out there to talk to. I know we have a lot of teachers that go into the university and talk to school, talk to some of our education students, welcoming those students into the classroom so they can see the actual, what's happening in the schools. But again, it goes back to that morale and support. And I think our district does a really good job of that. And so then it really does come back to really what can we afford? But I think the teachers that we have are great, they enjoy their experience here, and they tend to stay around quite a bit.
Okay, now a question about students. And I guess this question has kind of three parts. And you don't necessarily have to get real detailed in each unless you feel it's necessary. But the question is, do you believe the school district is adequately educating? On one hand, above-average students. On another hand, average students, those who are not necessarily going to, going to go to college, or at least immediately. And C, the third group, students with greater educational needs than the other two groups, the above-average and the average groups. And we'll start with Arlene. Do you feel the school district is adequately?
This is the third time in a row.
No, no, second. I've been keeping track here.
No, you just asked me the last time.
That's right. We're going a different direction this time, so.
I was wondering what was going on here. It's kind of different than what the other group was, so. So say that again, because I was not, I was going to.
Do you believe the school district is adequately educating above-average students, average students, and students with greater educational needs?
What do you mean by that?
Well, probably generally understood special education or, you know, with, what's the term?
Talking about the span of kids.
Yep.
Gifted all the way down to the kids.
Yeah, we're doing all of that, but what, I don't.
Well, my question is, are we, is the school district adequately educating each of those groups?
I think, I think they are from everything that I hear. And I know, I, from whatever I see, students I talk to who are here at, at our school, I think, I think they feel like they are getting a variety of things for our students. And when we went through the different, um, in the summer, or when school started, we went through all the different places and all the different things that were done over the, over the last year or so. And I believe that all of the students could be able to use all of those items that would, that have been just new into the schools. And I think from what I see and what I have read is that our students are actually, is everything perfect? No. Are we changing and moving forward? Absolutely, yes. And that is been proven by, by when they take their tests and all of that stuff. So that's what I would say. We are moving forward and we're trying to make sure all children, boys and girls, and are all moving forward. And, and our teachers are looking after them to make sure that they are doing for them what they need to do.
Okay, Matt.
I think the key word, I think you said adequate. I think adequate is a correct statement. I think there can be improvement made in a lot of those areas. And we talk about and think about workload of teachers and looking at asking them to do more for less. And I think it all ties back to funding as well. I mean, if you look at, how wonderful would it be if we were able to hire more staff in our buildings to work with our students with special needs and to help with behavioral issues? To be able to take that off of the plate of a lot of our teachers. I mean, we have a lot of our teachers who are dealing with behavioral problems in their classrooms that in other larger districts, or when the, or when school districts had more money, were able to have more one-on-one contact with those individuals while still, while still doing a lot of those inclusionary activities in the school. And so I think adequate, yes, there can be some improvements there that I would like to see. But again, it all ties to funding. We need the money to be able to do that. There's not a lot of people in the community that are going to volunteer to come in and help out with special education, you know, all the way up to, you know, our gifted students. Now, when you start looking at our gifted students, what are the other opportunities that we can afford them? We have the university in town. And then we have, you know, as you looked at, you said, average students, students that may not have college in their future. What are the trades and what are the other fields that we think, that we can utilize? Resources in our community, Southwest Technical College and all of those types of things. We need to be looking at other resources that can help us, that aren't going to cost us money, but we can still tie students to get them assistance with and some connection in the community.
Okay, Kurt.
I'll start out with the adequate. I believe the adequate is probably down with the greater needs, kids. And I think that's a difficult, difficult balance, once again. When you're dealing with certain budget constraints and things like that, you got to find the resources to help these people out. The average student, I got to believe we're probably doing above average with. The above-average student, I got to believe that they have great opportunities in our district also because of the university, because of the VOTAC and some of the programs where we are able to utilize those programs and cross-teach kids and give them those opportunities. And I'm glad our kids have those opportunities. And I believe that with the teachers that we have in certain programs, yeah, we're above average in a lot of those categories. Can we always improve? Yeah. And where do I think we can probably improve the most? It's probably at the bottom, unfortunately.
Okay, Gail.
I would, I would definitely agree with Kurt. I think that in just about all school systems, those at the bottom are always going to be struggling for a lot of reasons. Whether you're talking about, you know, teacher workload and the amount of time that they need to spend with kids that need more, more support. Whether you're talking about low-income kids who maybe not, you know, don't have an adequate breakfast and so they can't come to school, you know, fueled and ready for a day. Learning as a kid is really stressful and it burns a lot of calories and it's exhausting. So there's a lot of elements playing into the lower levels. I think that, I would say overall, though, if you look at our school's report cards, I think that we're doing more than adequate. I think that our school report cards, when we're hitting, you know, 80% and above, overall in our school district, that speaks to far greater results than just adequate. There are, obviously, as other people said, there's always room for improvement. If we're not at 100, then there's always something that we could be doing better. So maybe we need to think in terms of, you know, destination school and maybe destination 100. You know, what can we do to hit 100, a perfect A in all of our schools? We're already like, have such an amazing head start towards that with our, with our high scoring. So I think that credit where credit is due for our school board, our school district, our superintendent, our administrators and our teachers, giving them credit here for definitely returning results that are far and above just enough or adequate is called for. They've done a great job.
Okay, Josh.
Yeah, I'll echo what's been said. Adequate job, absolutely. Of course, just like Gail said, she stole my idea. There's always room for improvement. If you're never, if you're satisfied where you're at, unless you're at perfect, then you need to be striving for, for something greater. The, the evidence is in the, in the, um, the tests that are out there. We consistently are always scoring higher than average in our above-average scores across, when we compare, you know, district to district for our upper scores in, in social studies and math and reading. It doesn't matter where. Our middle, we, the reason why we have such high scores as a school is, it's our core. Our lower socioeconomic, which, that we have quite a few of, our poverty rate within our community, the ones that tend to be on the lower end, just statistically. Part of the reason why we were a Blue Ribbon School is that there's a element on our test score that we, our report card that we have from the state closing the gap. Meaning that what are we doing to bring those that are down here up to the middle? And we did such a great job of closing the gap that then the, you know, we received a Blue Ribbon School for it. So are there rooms for improvement? Yeah. Are we adequate? Absolutely. And the proof is, is in the awards and accolades and test scores that we've been given as a district.
Okay, related question. Does the school district adequately prepare students for their lives after graduation? Whether it's college or work or, or something else? And if not, what needs to be improved? And we'll start with Matt.
I would say yes, and I say that from someone who works at the university. And I work with the residence halls at the university on our campus and see a lot of the students that come and live in our halls are products of the Platteville school system. And just seeing where they're at developmentally and seeing, seeing the education that they've received as well as the life experience that they've, that they've received as well. These are students that, that outperform other students that come to UW-Platteville in terms of their awareness of social justice issues, their awareness of all of those types of things, diversity. And so I think that's a kudos to our teachers and what they have done to prepare them. I don't have a lot of experience to see how students have done when they go to Southwest Tech or other areas like that. But I think, you know, preparing students for life after high school and after they graduated is far more than just what they've received as a GPA and where they're headed. It's who they are as a well-rounded person, as a 360-degree student. And, and that's what I see the most of. I mean, obviously, they're smart. I see them, you know, engineering students on our campus that come up with the craziest things that you can imagine. But at the same time, just well-rounded individuals that give back to the community and that clearly have had good examples in the district, whether that be with teachers and administrators. I think definitely that we, that we produce students that leave our, that leave our, our school system in an excellent shape to move on after they've left.
Okay, Kurt.
I definitely believe they're adequately prepared. I think they're probably beyond adequately prepared, prepared, to be honest. I believe, once again, kudos to our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and also the community. You know, it takes a community to raise individuals. And it takes that community to be involved with them and to go to their events and to watch these kids and to help give advice and things like that. You know, some kids are fortunate enough to grow up around their grandparents and stuff. And you know what? Grandma and grandpa treat the kid different than mom and dad do, and there's nothing wrong with that. A teacher treats them different than mom and dad do, and there's nothing wrong with that. And I think that if we all raise kids as a community, kids will turn out pretty well. And I believe that's what Platteville does a good job at. And I believe that when kids come back and they want to go back and see their high school math teacher, their science teacher, or their music teacher, you know, that's a real compliment to the job that those folks did, or their coach. And I believe there's certain kids that leave, come back, and they seek out their old employer or those type of people. And when they do that, that's a thank you to those people who did a good job of going beyond adequate to help raise them.
Okay, Gail.
I'm definitely in agreement, adequate and above. I like what Matt said about, you know, seeing our well-rounded students come from, from our schools in the, at UWP. I see that same well-rounded person in my own son. In my own personal experience as far as, um, lives after school or, or I interpret that as what's going on beyond just the math and the English that he's bringing home. And honestly, I have a son with a very intense personality. There's no question there. A lot of people know Walter before they even know me, and I'm very often labeled as Walter's mom versus Gail Shortcraft. And the number of times that teachers directly reached out to myself and Walter's father to work in coordination to help resolve issues that Walter might have been having was just amazing. Far above and beyond just sending them home with their, with their worksheets. I like what Kurt said about raising our kids as a community. It takes a village. I think that's probably a phrase that, that a lot of people have heard. So not only am I seeing the teachers come together as a community, working with us as, as parents and our son to, to help him. I also see the. Um, I also see the, the topics of conversation that he brings home where I didn't talk to him about that. Things about personal relationships, things about, um, um, you know, social justice issues, as Matt said. These are things that I had not, I hadn't had, had the chance to have a conversation with him about yet. I was looking forward to, because I'm a high, like, advocate of social justice, but he's the one that brought it up first. And it is just amazing to see the kinds of insight that he brings home from his experience at school that I know that I never had the option to learn when I was in school, um, not that many years ago, but still. Um, he reflects exactly what the teachers are doing to help him be an individual above and beyond just the academics.
Okay, Josh.
So, ultimately, do we prepare our students as Platteville prepares the students for moving on in life? I would argue absolutely. Doesn't matter what they're gonna go into. If they wanna go into a four-year school, the class offerings that we have at the, at the high school specifically allow for that, Project Lead the Way, um, EP classes. They are consistently promoted and encouraged for these students to take. Walk into the Platteville High School, look in the commons. I think it's really unique and it's super cool that it was brought up to me by, I, I grew up in Mont Hore. Uh, in Mont Hore, uh, we just hosted something, it was a basketball game for Mont Hore here a couple of months ago. And, uh, he said, you know, what's really neat is when I walked into the Platteville High School, what do you see around in the commons area but the photographs of those who have been on our National Honor Society finalists, semifinalists, those that are recognized? That has been a priority, and you see that right away when you walk into our school, that that's what's valued, that's what's important to us. Say you don't wanna go into a four-year college, and that's absolutely fine. Uh, Platteville Schools do a great job partnering with Southwest Tech, uh, in a lot of different programs and preparing them for a two-year associate's degree. Uh, if you don't wanna go that route too, there's other class offerings that say, um, you wanna start a restaurant? We have a, a great food service program there that, um, there's a, a program where you, you go through the, the class, you actually start a mock restaurant, you prepare a meal for the community, your community comes in, and that is a skill that you can take forward and use right away when you're ready to get out of Platteville High. So, from the, the student that wants to, um, continue their education through a four-year degree or the student that wants to start a job the day that they graduate, Platteville does a great job of doing it. And I'll just argue that if you wanna look it up, check out the ACT scores of those that are coming out of Platteville consistently above the state average at all times.
You had to mention restaurants to somebody that hasn't had dinner yet. Arlene.
I'm cooking these snacks. Um, I'm here and, um, and I know that they do get jobs from a variety of places because I see a lot of them, um, in, in my area where I live. But one of the things that I also have, um, found is that, um, the students that have graduated and gone on to college, um, after, uh, after they have gone to universities or whatever, they wanna come back here also and try to get a job here, and some of them are, and I've met some of them who've come back here so that they could be here because they thought that our schools did so much for them that they wanna do now for, that they want to do the same things. And so, I think that when they, with the education that they are getting through us, it gives them the feeling that they can go just about anywhere and get a job, including at home. Because sometimes the hardest job is to get a job at home, and they're getting good jobs here, um, at the universities, here in town, um, and, and at the schools, they're teaching at the schools and things. And I think that says a lot, that they wanted to come back here because they knew it was a good place and they wanna have, share that with other students. So, I think we're doing a really good job.
Okay. Um, I believe it was Kurt, but I may be wrong about that, but I think it was Kurt who mentioned all of the activities that the school district offers. Obviously, the, uh, basketball teams did very well this year, and there's, uh, all number, all manner of other sorts of kind of out-of-the-classroom things. So, my question is, um, is there a correct balance between academics and co-curriculars in the, in the school district, or is it skewed too much in one direction or the other, in your opinion? And we'll start with Kurt.
Well, I'll say this, I'm a huge fan of co-curriculars. I believe that they teach you many things, and one of those things that I believe is most important that you always can take with you is you can always strive to be a little bit better. And like Josh said, it's really hard to be perfect, and I don't think any of us have seen it or attained it yet, so we keep working for it. And in a co-curricular, a lot of times that teaches kids that. And the other thing is, is I believe there's a lot of discipline that goes with the co-curriculars, from managing time to being on time and just all the other discipline things you have. And you learn to deal with, once again, a whole new group of peers potentially, a whole new group of coaches or instructors that you may not deal with all the time, and also different dynamics that you might not be used to dealing with in the classroom. So, I believe it's all important, and I think we have a really good balance of it right now, but I don't believe it's overly sensitized one way or the other.
Okay, Gail.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I know that my son tends to be really busy with, uh, um, you know, band and strains and, you know, the sport that may be running with the season. Um, and he's participated according to his level and his comfort. Sometimes, um, the decision he makes kind of maybe pushes him over, but he's offered that by the schools, and he gets to pick and choose how he, he loads up his, his schedule. Um, I don't see an imbalance by any means where one is favored over the other. I feel like, um, our kids are given incredible opportunity to be involved in different ways and encouragement from, um, the coaches, um, who are, you know, double-checking with, you know, at least my son, I know, hey, are you gonna, you know, play basketball again? I think you should. And so, you know, they're encouraged to do so. Um, and on top of the, the extras that Kurt talked about, you know, discipline and time management, dynamics, um, that they might learn in a, in a sport or, um, you know, maybe in music class, there's still, you know, learning teamwork, learning how to work with other people. And maybe that's kind of what we meant by dynamics, but I know just from my experience in, you know, the working world, we get the most things done when we are working as a team. Um, and so, you can take the things that you learn by, um, playing basketball with ten other kids and apply that to the workplace. And so, um, bringing that back to the, um, you know, the, the previous question about, um, preparing for life after school, I think that the, um, reflection of, well, be, our kids being well-prepared, prepared is basically because we do offer a good balance between our academics and our extracurriculars. It gives them that rounded education that moves them beyond books and gets them more involved.
Okay, Josh.
Yeah, absolutely. There is a correct balance in pre, the co-curriculars and the academics. They're both equally important. The learning doesn't, in a co-curricular, does not stop at the classroom. You learn so many things outside of the classroom, uh, whether it be with a team or with an organization. Um, and, and Platteville does a great job of leaving it up to the student. You can be as involved as you wanna be, or you can do nothing. Uh, there's, there's no issue there, and there's not a lack of things to try. You wanna try basketball for the first time in seventh grade, go up for it. Uh, if you wanna, if you wanna try drama, give it a shot. Uh, my son's in band, he plays the violin, I don't have a lick of instrumental talent whatsoever. It's great to hear him try it at home, that's cool, because then I get to go see band concerts that I never was involved with as a, as a kid. Um, my, my sixth grader right now is being recruited by Mrs. Dressler to be on the student council next year. She says that apparently politics runs in the family, she wants him to do that. That's cool. He never would've wanted to do that, but she's encouraging him to do it. And I think the, the academic staff, uh, does an excellent job of, of, frankly, for very little pay, providing a lot of their time, you know, almost on a volunteer basis to, to give these opportunities to our students. Our coaches put in so much time, uh, whether it's a coach for, for a sport or, or an, on the, uh, a drama, uh, Bao UN, it doesn't matter. They put in a ton of time for, for very little pay that we offer them. I'd, I'd love to pay them more, but we just, we can't. So, um, a good balance, yeah, absolutely, a good balance between the two.
Okay, Arlene.
I think, um, it's very, uh, very good. Especially, I can see that there, sometimes there are children who really don't like to, to read or to do things, but if they know that they are, uh, if they go to football, basketball, whatever, but that they have to have good grades in order to stay in. And that's really important, and it really does work for students. And I think it helps them to, uh, to grow and to know that they can do some things and that, um, by being a part of, of these things, that they have to be, uh, make sure that they get their stuff done or they're not gonna be able to play. And that is really hard for boys and girls, and so, I think it's really great that, that they are participating in it and that parents are happy that they go into different things, um, as they grow older. So, I, I go along with it.
Okay, Matt.
Yeah, I, I would echo a lot of what's been said already. I think the, the balance is, is really, I would say, amazing, I, I, you know, based on my experiences and observations. I think one of the things that Josh, you know, talked about it is so much learning happens outside of the classroom and getting students involved and working in teams, whether it be sports or, you know, student government, to be able to problem-solve and have civil discourse with someone and really talk about, you know, have a disagreement but talk it through, um, just so many things that maybe don't happen in a classroom. And I think what's beneficial in Platteville, being in a smaller community that, that larger communities don't have, is if you look at the advisors and the coaches of our teams and those groups, they all, most of them have education backgrounds or they are teachers, so they understand the balance and they know the importance of not pushing students so much until nine or 10 at night because they know that they have those tests the next morning. And so, I think that's something that, that we really value in, in our district, having, having those connections with who those advisors are.
Okay. We're in the homestretch, speaking of almost 10 o'clock. Our next-to-last question is, is there an issue that has not come up tonight or hasn't come up at all, uh, that you feel strongly about? And if so, what's your position about this issue? We'll start with Gail.
Um, I think that if I had to name an issue that wasn't brought up, and it may not be necessarily because, um, I'm not aware of this issue in our community, but I know that, um, fair and equal treatment of all individuals, um, with a very specific point to speak about, um, I know it's, it's a bad label to talk about bathroom bills, but when we're talking about, um, our young kids, um, some of them who may be going through their own personal identity crisis, I think that it is essential for our schools to always make sure that they have, um, a safe space to, to come to school, to learn, um, and to be able to process through whatever personal, um, you know, crisis they may be going through, um, without the threat of being ostracized or being treated differently. So, um, I never heard of anything negative happening in Platteville schools, um, but that is something that is high on my radar, um, because I am, you know, I have a lot of people that I know who have, you know, personal, um, experiences related to that and, um, we're talking about kids who are already struggling to find themselves. So, to throw into the mix something like, you know, maybe, um, sexual orientation or maybe oppression of gender, um, add that on to just the stresses of getting your homework done or making the basketball team or, um, you know, making honors band, um, it puts kids in, in a, in a place of, of high stress and, and crisis. So, I would highly advocate for, um, always making sure that our schools may, uh, remain a safe space for individuals who are struggling with identity crisis, um, whatever it may be, and provide whatever support possible to them.
Okay, Josh.
I don't have anything real specific, but, uh, you know, make sure that it hasn't been touched on, but given the forum that we have here, you know, those watching at home and the millions on the internet watching right now, I figure it's an opportunity to say truly thank you to the, to the teachers, staff and administrators that we have within our district. We've been talking up here tonight, everybody has said how great of a district that we have, and we truly do. And it starts with, with that, the, the teachers, the administrators and the staff. Platteville is a great community because of our schools. I'll argue that the number one reason why Platteville is a destination community for those in Southwest Wisconsin and the tri-state area is because of the great schools that we have and it starts with our, with our teachers. We don't get an opportunity to say thank you to them enough on a public setting. Um, they've been, had a tough, we'll say, seven, eight years here lately. And, uh, we, I, I, I appreciate, my wife appreciates, that our kids are going through a, a district that is providing them with, uh, super high education, I'll give you one anecdote. We just got back from a trip and my, my mother and father-in-law went with us on the trip and our, our seven-year-old, who's a rambunctious little fella, um, we were down in Disney and we had an opportunity to go on a lot of different rides and different things and, and when, right when we walked into the Magic Kingdom, the most magical apparently place on earth, um, there was a Hall of Presidents. And he said, Dad, can we go check out the Hall of Presidents? My teacher told me how cool it would be to, to go learn about the presidents, and I thought, there's Mickey, there's Goofy, I don't know the rest of them because I'm not a Disney guy, I went along because it's Disney. But, um, how cool is, my mom, my mother and father-in-law are like, that's that education that you're getting on in Platteville. They, it's a priority to him to go see these, this Hall of Presidents because he wants to learn, and, and that's because we have such great teachers. And so, not necessarily an issue, just an opportunity to say thanks.
Okay, Arlene.
I think one of the things that, um, that sometimes we forget, those people who are not the, that teacher or some other things. I think that we have some people who are doing things all the time, uh, making breakfast for the kids so that those kids who are coming for the day will have something that, that they wouldn't have at home. Those teacher, those individuals who are willing to get there, uh, up very early and, and prepare the food at the morning and then at lunchtime and, and hear how terrible it is and all that stuff. But that's one of the things I think is really important. It's everybody in the school who makes it work. It's not just one certain person, one certain group, it's everybody. And I think we kind of forget some of the people who are hard, are working hard, but they're kind of behind the scenes. And so, I think that's one of the things that, um, that I like about our school is that we have some really good people all the way around.
Okay, Matt.
Yeah, um, I'm along the same lines as Gail in terms of, um, looking at students in our district in terms of marginalized populations are underrepresented and, you know, looking at, you know, obviously bathroom bills, that's, that's a long, I mean, that's a, that could be a whole forum in and of itself. Um, but I think those are issues that we need to start thinking about. I think we, we have a larger than I think a lot of people realize GLTQ population in our schools of individuals that identify or are struggling with their identity and trying to figure out who they are and where they fit. And again, balancing that with going through the typical stressors of being in high school or middle school and finding out who they are, but then also having other feelings. And so, I think that's something we need to talk about a lot today. I'd be happy to talk more about with, with people as we go forward. That's a passion of mine, social justice, marginalized populations. Um, and I think for me, it's, it's important for our schools to be, again, a safe space for everyone and for everybody to feel welcome and be able to be who they are, um, in the classroom and, and in our schools and in our facilities.
Okay, Matt. I'm sorry, did it again. Kurt.
You know, I can kind of echo the same things that everybody up here has said. And, you know, another thing that I think is an issue, and it's always gonna be an issue, is this right here, technology. And I don't think that no matter how many times we say it to every student, every child, none of them realize really how powerful it is. And they don't realize how powerful it can be as a teaching aid, but how powerful it could be to work against them too if they make one small mistake. And I think that that's something that we can always stress to them and we can always talk to them about, but we can never forget that it's always there.
Okay. It's time for the last question. Kind of feel like Ed McMahon in the Johnny Carson Karnack segments. Um, we're gonna ask each of the candidates to answer one final question tonight, and the question is, why should people vote for you for the school board? And we'll start with Josh.
I started on the school board back in 2009, um, again, because a friend asked me to do it, and I'm really glad I did it. I'd like to, uh, stay on the school board as I think that we have accomplished some great things, but there's more that we can do, and I would love to be, um, a part of a collaborative team that we have on the board in shaping the future of the Platteville School District, to continue to be, uh, I would say, the shining star that we star that we have down here in southwest Wisconsin and one of the top schools in the state. So that's why I want to stay on the school board.
Okay, Arlene.
Oh, I would like to stay here, be here one more year. I've seen so many things change over the years since I've been here. And I would like to see one last year when our school that we, this past year, just became brand-new almost. And I'd like to see it as it moves into now that things are more settled. I'd like to see all of that. And there's also some things that the school is doing that I would really like to be a part of, because I think there's some wonderful things, and I love doing that.
Okay, Matt.
For me, you know, obviously, it's giving back to the community and getting involved. And with two young children going to be in the district or currently in the district, I want to be a part of that and advocate for them and help them through that process. You know, on a personal level, I feel that I bring some extensive experience and training from my current position in my role at the university. Working with budgets, I help co-manage a budget of about $15 million, which is similar to the budget of the Platteville School District. I work with all of our facilities and operations and have some tie-ins with how to manage that. I do a lot of outreach in my job with different constituencies and different groups at the university, whether that be with students or different departments as well as the community. I have a lot of experience with conflict resolution. I do that on a daily basis with college students, whether I like it or not, and having hard conversations. You know, I'm not a conflict person, but in my role and my position at the university, I often have to have hard conversations with students and take phone calls at 2:00 AM about mental health issues and deal with those types of things. But I'm also excited and want to serve, to be able to work in a team atmosphere, whether that be with any of these individuals up here or the current board, really because I think any of the people that are running for the school district. And I'm truly honored. I mean, after sitting here with this group of people up here, I mean, I think the Platteville School District and the city of Platteville has a really tough decision to make, but I think it's a good decision because I think any one of us that are elected, I'm really happy that are going to represent our students and represent our district well. You know, I've got a big passion, I touched on diversity and social justice, and want to bring that, you know, some of my things with that as well. You know, for me, I'm an introvert. I'm, you know, so things like this, I do a lot of public speaking in my position, but it's not my, it's not what I like to do. I'm a processor. And so, you know, for me, that's something that I would bring to the board as well as, I like to process decisions, look at all sides of a decision, and really make a good educated decision on something. And I want to get input, whether that be from the rest of the board, from teachers, and taxpayers, and the people in the community as well. And lastly, I just want to be present and visible. If I'm voted in in this position, I really want to get out to the schools. I want to talk with teachers. I want to be in classrooms. I want to talk with students. What are their experiences? And bring those experiences back to share with the board on how we can do that. I want to get out there. I want to be at events. I want to get to know the people that we're serving and working with.
Okay, Kurt.
You know, it's always a tough position when you're towards the end of the line because everybody's always kind of said everything that you were going to say. But, you know, I share a lot of the same sentiments, and I believe that we all have X amount of time, and we have X amount of time that we can give to what we think are the proper causes to give our time to. And I just believe that school board's the proper cause for me to give my time to because of where my students are at, my kids right now in that process. And I believe that we have a limited amount of time to get involved. And for me, right now, this is the time to get involved. So that's why I'm out there, and I appreciate anybody's vote.
Okay, finally, Gail.
Thanks again to everybody for being here. I know it's late. I'll try and be short and sweet, but I'm going to do a little bit of my own patting my own back here. First, obviously, I want to echo what Matt said. I want to get to know our community better. I feel like our school has a lot of things in hand. The budget is being handled for the shortfalls that we're facing, and made really well by Dr. Blenz and the school board. Our academics are off the charts. We're scoring so high. We've talked about how our co-curriculars are balanced with our academics. Our kids are coming out of our school districts so prepared and so well-rounded. The one thing that I feel like I bring expertise-wise is to the community outreach committee that Josh has mentioned, is new to the school board. And I'll explain why I think I'm a prime candidate for that. When I first moved to Platteville, I was a stay-at-home mom. And before finishing my degree at UWP in PR and journalism, I volunteered in the city of Platteville. I worked with the arts board, primarily. I jumped in. It was a lot of fun. I have a passion for the arts. I helped install the transom windows on the old Steve's building, those images that are up there that cover the brown paint. I helped with the public art with the Main Street Program. So we have some really cool bike racks that are downtown. I also worked with Ted Boden on, he was involved in the public art. But we also did a paint recycling program for the city where we took everybody's old paint and we found a way to mediate that and pull it up houses and keep it out of the groundwater. So I have a very rich involvement history with the city of Platteville and in itself. I sat on the police commission when we were looking for the new building. I took a little bit of break from Platteville because I started participating in the Sports League in Madison. And in that Sports League, I took a, you know, a sports club, and I had transitioned them into a nonprofit organization that focuses on leadership as opposed to just playing a sport. So essentially, I kind of think of myself as a problem solver and a fixer. If something needs to be done, I get the idea. I go through the research. I find a way to do it, and I find great ways to make things happen. So I would love that opportunity to apply that to the community outreach element of the school board, that I think that the school board right now in this time is really looking to improve. I think that that could be a very important piece of improving our enrollment problem right now in terms of where our people are living outside of Platteville versus in the city. I have the ability to, I'm a relationship builder, and so I have no problem going out and talking to people face-to-face, or in groups, or in public speaking scenarios, to learn as much information as I can. The more information that you have, the better decisions that you can make. So I feel like I would fit that niche really, really well in this scenario. And it would be an incredible addition to what our school board is already doing with our academics, with our extracurriculars, and where our students are coming out from.
Okay, I would like to thank all of the candidates for school board, also all of the candidates for city council for participating tonight. I'd also like to thank the Main Street Program, Badger Brothers Coffee, Jody from the city for sitting through this, and the city for providing the facility for this, and everyone who sat through almost four hours of candidates tonight. I would say that the candidates and attendees who are able to stay, are invited to stay afterward, but not too long probably because they probably need to lock the place. I will remind everyone who is here in the room and also watching on TV that this candidate forum will be able to be viewed on the city of Platteville's YouTube page, which is Platteville WISC, I believe, on YouTube. We will link to that on the Journal's Facebook page, and we will also mention that in the Journal next week. So thanks for coming today.